Yat e she Myron Lizer Navajo Nation Vice President Kamanti Nishlet, Tlalhane basis chin, Aro Kamanti Desche, Klasch de Chaneli. It's good to be with you this night on our August 13 Town Hall COVID-19 update. Let's get started with opening prayer and then we'll have a slew of great speakers and presenters tonight. And certainly, we look forward to hearing an update from the President of Navajo Nation Jonathan Nez. But first, let's open up in prayer. She be in God, we give you praise this night, Lord. We ask you to be with us, Lord, and all those that are needing a fresh touch, Lord, needing healing while they're needing your protection. Lord, we ask you to touch those people, Father, that are suffering and that are struggling right now. For those families that are mourning, be with them, Lord, we pray for them. And their safekeeping, Lord, that you would grant them favor, Lord, and extend mercy, Lord, to them. Your loving hand, Lord, Father, touching every family member, Lord. This night, Father, we seek your guidance, we seek your precious wisdom, Lord. As we conduct the business of the nation, Lord, Father, we ask that the leaders can be found humble, Lord, Father. Seek in you, Father, seek in to lead our people, Father, forthright and just, Lord. We thank you, we give you all the praise, and we ask you to be with us in this meeting, Lord, that the data, the knowledge here, Lord, that's passive of people, it would be effective and timely, Lord, and that many can rely on it, Father, and run with it. So we thank you again, ask your Holy Spirit to be with us, Lord. Give us all your wisdom, Lord, that you have for us this night in Jesus. She be in God. Amen and amen. So as we said tonight, thank you for joining us on this Town Hall. And we have a great lineup here of presenters. And we're just gonna get started right from the get-go. So President Jonathan Nez is standing by, so sir, take it away. We appreciate your leadership. Shalawak.
All right, well, thank you, Vice President, and everyone that is tuning in to the Office of the President and Vice President Town Hall Meeting, Town Hall Session. You know, many of you have sent questions to, through Facebook and through other social media accounts, and we appreciate that. And, you know, many of them, we answer those questions because I know that many others may have similar questions as well on what's happening with COVID-19 and what our team has been doing to fight this virus here on the Navajo Nation. So yat e tanichid ni do leh a she kee, shudun ne, a no ltschok, tanichin nahligi. Kodo e ya, shedet che, sheen slon tchat ne, sahni basis chin. Tchodet chi ni e, deshe che do, tchat chi ni e, deshenale. Aro kodo shuna Myron Lizer e, nige jehadzi, kodo shikana lwa, shikana lwa do, shiva do, sizon. Hot a, a ni tla, yinani shile, tanit lingo ekhot a, a sala, kanedad, sala do, lni nacha, yinad a ni nit lingo. Aro di nahlnegi do, d'kotsun tschagi naas e itzat, tahde ye liagi jo. Ebe, ebene ninala di, bindel ne she, oyoh netzeli, sala e ya, kandta. So nige Washington a do, lni sta no, e bayatye. So di demo pis kana gune, a sala jinda, anesho ne, mande gune. E she hot a, nige Washington iki e, a nalne dole. Lekonde a, a, doe a ltschok, dalne shigi yah, yah ikhat e, kude dalne shkune. Sala she e ah, gane, ndahaz tchan doleh.
All right, sorry about the technical difficulties. As you know, we sometimes run into this WebEx Zoom internet problems. And so this being the time right now that many are on the internet right now. So I'm sure the tunnel is pretty clogged. But President is giving and will continue to give these updates. We'll wait for him to get back online. But certainly, you gotta be ready in season after season. So this evening, we'll be focusing on the census, right? The 2020 Census Stand and Be Counted. There was the campaign that they were doing called, gosh, I can't remember, something about the knock. The people, the counters are out there, and they're knocking on doors, right? To avoid the knock is what their campaign is. And they really wish that every Navajo, every family, every person that's living on the nation here to be counted. So it's very important. Do you know, it means funding potentially for our nation, but also it means representation, right? Maybe adding another congressional member or whatnot. And so that's what it looks like. And it's gonna be pretty important for us to be able to show numbers where, you know, we have, are needing to be able to dwell on the data and pass that data and share that data with not only other tribal members, but also our congressional delegation and our state agencies and whatnot. So it's really needed, very important. And so if you haven't been counted yet, please, by all means, get out there. If you can't do it online, maybe it's a little burdensome trying to navigate the website or whatnot, you know. There will be people knocking on doors. And so if you're waiting for them to come, you can facilitate that by probably giving them a call, giving them your address, and they'll come out. But also too, they have outreaches in the various communities. We, Vice President's office attended one outreach in Chinlea, Arizona, over at the Sayet Shopping Center. It was very good. They had signed up 60 to 70 people there. They're just walking by, the passersby. And so it was good to be out there and be counted. And so I do see President is back online. This President just filled in for you real quick. I gave away all the data and everything, so you're good now.
All right, good.
Just kidding.
Okay.
I don't want to steal your thunder, but go ahead, President, take it away.
Thank you, Vice President. You know, I was talking in Navajo, and I was saying thank you to my sister, my older sister, for tuning in. And just because of that, my sister, if you're still on the air, it's because of you, I think, it went out. So you always like to tease your sister, so I'm gonna tease my sister about that. And yesterday was my mother's birthday too. A happy birthday to my mother, Mabel. And I won't tell you all her age, but she is, seems like she's getting younger every time I talk to her. I haven't seen my mom in, gee, since this pandemic started, you know. I know, I know, some of you are gonna say, "How come you're not visiting your mom?" You know, I just don't want to, you know, put my family or my mom, my dad into a predicament. But my sister Nancy, you know, she's been taking care of the ranch. And sister, if you're still listening, thank you so much for doing that. Kodo nige mah bahon lia, na nishinl, nige ba, bacheh, nisun shada. Shada di ni ne, aro hashit zatiko, bi yesh tye ne, o ne, sisne she be nina, nashno. Ni, be shlo. Shada sah, kujet, kujet ehiya, wakona, watsala da. Shada fodejda, bajot loklesa. She, Thomas Cawley, nige do, aro natala do, here, loop now. Aro Carolina, Mesa, Arizona, thank you for tuning in. And many of you watching from Window Rock and Ship Rock and all the various communities with the rock and the name. Good evening to each and every one of you. And yeah, something went wrong. I had to reboot my pad, my iPod, and it looks like it's working now. Full bars though, it's probably just something happened. But just to give you an update, today, 9,394 positive cases since the start of COVID-19. Up to today, 5 o'clock, I got this hot off the press new numbers. There are 38 new cases, 38 new cases. And, you know, we had, I think, seven a couple days ago, right, Vice President, or three days ago? And now, you know, it's starting to climb. Come on.
Yesterday.
It's, was it yesterday? Let's be diligent, let's continue to, you know, wear our mask, social distance, washing our hands with soap and water. And, you know, we've been going almost, I think, a little bit over two weeks now of 50 or less cases here on the Navajo Nation. So good job to the Navajo people. Aro recovery number, 6,942 have recovered since the start of this pandemic. We have one new death from the other day to today, totaling 478 of our people who've lost their lives to this virus. So let's pray for them. Let's, if we know someone, just give them a call and, you know, let them know that we're thinking of them and maybe even pray with them too as well. You know, they're going through some tough times right now. And we need to, you know, stand together with our friends and families that are struggling throughout the Navajo Nation. Well, throughout the world, you know, we got Navajos all over the world. Aro di tested abidi liagi, ndaskagi ya, e ya, naas edin, do ba a, sos. Demili yaje, do ba a, din, nez edin, do ba a, nakke, neltal ekon, nige nihne ndaskha. That's over 40%, 42% of our total population being tested at 87,402. Aro di, d'kotsun tschagi, beda do lneagi ya. Naas e, demili yaje, do ba a, tchat nezna din, do ba a, na din, do ba a, din. Ekone lta, ekon, positive test results. E, hot a, e ba, bahon na ni zi do, ndekhl khaagi, hot a, bethbeda hazan. Aro itzadaskhaegi ya, din, d'kotsun tschagi do, beda halon da. Yat e ndasklingi, e hastan, demili yaje, do ba a, naas e, nezna din, do ba a, tizdin, do ba a, nakke. Ekhot a, e ya, recover da, tzat, liganak, itz, e ya, itzadaskha do, yat e ndaskli. Aro nige nihne, itzad, dajit nige ya, din, nezna din, do ba a, sos, din, do ba a, naas e. E hot a, e ya, kon nige nihne. Itzad, dajit n, she di nijen, ana, ana ilte. So she kon batso di lzen doleh, she kee, nihneke, edam, lene gi. Aro, o, kodo han, nige kon, kon pesun, itzutet, a ya, kon pes, pes bahas andan, lene gi, e yimye, lta tazni na. Sala demo e da. Aro ya, da, ton, e ya, kodo, tsalet e, haz aji, kujebi ki, da de, tegi, shuna, beth Myron Lizer Executive Brands. Haz aji, e ya, naaltsos, biche, kude liya, nige pes bahasa. E, hot a, e la na, nige, danzen, nige nihne, di, no, be jinda haz tegi. Di, pesle chi, naas kuda do lni. Pesle chi, e ya, beth yehad haz ti, doleh, nige nihne, do electricity beda halonegi. Aro tchoda, tchodo, naas kuda di lni, ta di, no, hot a, e pesop, nacha teini ke, hot a, jenikil pezan. Pes bahasa, a ne, e, yesi aji, yelanda ile. Aro nige, kodo osan, biche, kude liya, di, la na, da ni, zen, nige nihne, pa, ta di, no. Aro di do, internet da, tegi do, telephoni, beda halonegi. E ya, de nebi ke, bakaon, dalne shtoleh, jo, lta she nige bethbeda hazan. Le, kosa ol, wala da, aida, stop, teya, telephoni gi. Ebene na, ekon, naas kuda di lni, do, jo, telecommunication, welyagi. Di, internet da, tegi, nige nihne, biche, kuda do lni. E, eje ek, atnchalchin, e ya, ah, gane, ndahaz tya. Kon, naa, a ni, dan lene gi, tsalet e, dan lene gi, kuje hozdo haotzoje, solle haotzoje, yohtro haotzoje. E naaltsos, biche, kude liya. Biche kude liagi, e, kon, nige nihne, do ba daoltchaagi, da, nene gi, e biche kui liya. So, nige, mado, nige, ye, balchin, daalonegi, balchin, daoltchaagi. Aro badaoltchaagi, teachers, dan lene gi, da, nene ya. Do, e ya, le, school, da, a, sala deitleh, da doleh. Di, internet bi, e, nige, ndatlin doleh, teacher, dan lene gi, ebene na, e ah, gane, ndahsi, tchan doleh, da, no. Hot a, han, nige, kuda ile. Aro ebene, dajit naalnegi, betsa, aro e le, school, da. Yahanji, krego, ya, nchalchin. E, hot a, aro, beda, dlanet, a doleh, kro, ah, gane, ndahaz tchan doleh, da, bedi, ni, nihna, a ni. Ashon, land, tanichidini, akonde, nige, tsalet e, nige, es tye gi, ebene, e ya, a ni, ke, ndahuita, da, bedi, no. Ebene na, ek, kon, a, nige, nihne, nchalchin, dan lene gi, ma, gane, da, da, altchat doleh, ta di, no. Ta di, ni, ehan egi, biche, kude liya. Aro kuje Washingtonje, ultchat ndazneli gi, do, ashon, EBI, G, Navajo Region, haz aji. E Washingtonje, ultchat dayol yedigi, e do, a, naa, a ni, laa, je, ndasutaha gi. E do, nige jehadzi, la, ashin leha, gane, ndahaz tchan, doleh, nchalchin. Aro badaaltchaagi, da, no, yinad, asli, so, e bacheh, ni, zen. So, e, unisper, zen, doleh, she, e do, shen, a, tanichin nahligi. Aro di, di na, she, shuna, Vice President Myron Lizer, ya, ya, doleh, do, Arden Mitchell, ekon, da, ne, bayol tchaagi kon, beda ne shedekl. Nige census egishe, ekhot a, beda ne shedekl, mi doleh, she, e do, shunna. So, e do, bada chalna, ya, ashon, dajit ebene, e, le, nige, Navajo Nation, besa, yahanante. Aro, nige, naa, a ni, banda, ni, lne gi, do, e, hot a, hadastzogi, e, hot a, naaltsos gi, tchudayol. Aro, hot a, e, ndotzot, e, hot a, nelt, kon, beda, dan lene gi, ndai, nihlegi, e, badaastzogi, ebene, yanbaraya, le, Washington. So, beda yol tchaagi, ebene, hot a, beda ne shedekl. So, lta, naas kon she, lta, she, nige nihne, nihne, dan lene gi, she, le, Washington, nacha, ndasutad, doleh. Wenzel, dajit ebene na, ek, kodo, nige, kodo, census egishe, ashon, nige, naa, ne shudahl, she kee, do, shunna. Aro di demo yaje, gune, jo, tsa, tsa, di, tsa demo, demo yaje, ya, da, yeah, Saturday, ya, da, e le, Winslow, gonesi, kri. Aro, loop, dajit, aro delkanje. H, ya, do, she, cleaning supplies, da, tega, da, ndasi, ni, ebene na, gi, e, aji, Winslow Indian Healthcare Center. Aji haz aji, haotzoje, ya, oyot, de, de, skine, ebene na, ekon, naaltsos, nde, ni, doleh. Di naaltsos, di nahlnegi, a, ltschok, bahanei gi, bakaon, ebene ni, da, she, nige, nihne, do, bethbeda hazan, da, da, di, no. Ebene na, ekon, si, aro, ya, do, ndasi, ni, di, petlin, da, in. Eh benina ekon si, although, chiyan do, ndasi ni, di petlin dal inigido. So eh kodoo, nikke tsilao dan lenigi, uh, kon, tsilte, adje tsilai ikides igi ya Chief Francisco. Uh, eh do, uh, da da, um, le, kujeh Saint Michael's do, uh, nuwachiko Gennaro je, je, atinegi ya, Summit Halyeje, eh kwa atine, da de kha, eh kwa do, naaltsosindeitni ho hadina, naaltsosindeitni do, di, uh, mask da tegi, ndo, ndasi ni, do hand sanitizers da tegi, hota eh bada huilna on. Ye go, da, eshi eshi na, da bedi, no, hota sad bichekodeliya. Benina gi di, kujeh Gallup Indian Medical Center, Tsitsui Medical Center, kujeh Window Rock, Saint Michael, Fort Defiance. Ah, di, ah, deselki di nachnigi, uh, akondan, Yakodon niltadini, no, eh benina eh kon, hanet, do naaltsos ndasi ni, eshi eshi na, lta eshi eh, ad, lta, uh, mask danikke je godalia, eh do, uh, baheh niitzen kodoo JT Willie do, aden do nikke nihin na, balegana dan lenigi, di, uh, chi to, ze, kidrastegi, ape da yila. Although, eh ben nach ndasi ni, eshi eshi na, kon, adje ikle go. Eh tsudahl, na da bedi, no, hota eh ya, sad bichekodeliya. So, di, damoyyage kon na, lta eshi nikke nihin na, le, hosdo, lta keedahatze. Cha, uh, asan de zeden da, nikke nihin na, nhaalchen nikke tsokke, nikke nalake, ad, keedahatze, lenigi hosdo. Do la do, ye go, nikke ka iche, chiyan ye, ka iche, peso da pe, thkoda pe, eh adje, kodad, navikiya paka je, eh ya, ichi kon ya. So, eh benina nikhe do, olaa nikhe de, o, 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 da, uh, he da, o nikke chiyan nikke kon liya. Nikhe shad, deneda ni, lenigi, nikhe do, khaan di, chehda di, no. Eh benina eh di damoyyage kon na, Saturday, nas ede olkhilo, Tsabi olkhilo ye, ad, nikhey nas ede olkhilo. Eh hota eh ya, chiyan, uh, although, petlin dal inigii, eshi la na danidzin, nikke eshi indeitnihto leh. Uh, ad, so nikke nihin na, bich aashon na, daalthe, ashon eshi eshi na. Uh, nikhe do, khaan ekja hongzon do leh, jo eh ben nach eh, kon, analzile nikke eshtegi, do nikhe do nikke jo bahalon, balegana do, chehda te, ad, tsah, hosdo. Nakhayda na, nakhayda leni da, uh, nakhayda jini da, na daaltsos da, bekavi shliji dan lenigi. Eh do, jo ah, ye go de de skid, eshi nikke beda hazen hosdo. Eh benina bekadi chehda di, no, eshi hota chiyan indeitnihto leh, di damoyyage kon na. Uh, although, di ni, uh, skam do, skam, uh, ndaini shuna, eh kon nikke tsilaltsoba ha, ah, do leh, Code Talkers dan lenigi. Nikke, nikke nachan dasbadon, nikke zad tsudayos, eh, eh beda na, na da, na na, jo eh, skam do, ndaneshto do leh. Nikke Washington, eh bedaidnihto leh, nikke Code Talkers, no. So, nachabi ha, kodoo, nas ede olkhilo, shi eh kon, nikke Miss Navajo Nation, eh nachayileh do leh, jo, dekho shi kodoo sad, uh, ye yadahtegi do leh, yacheh danidzin, nikke, uh, eh sadigishi eh kodoo nikke je, kodayileh do leh. Do shidoshina, uh, Vice President Myron Lizer, do shidoshin, uh, uh, tsuson nacha ha, ah, do leh, do, je, baheh niitzen, nikke do, heh, nikke shi kon Navajo Code Talkers ba, ha, ha, haditzi do leh, skam. Although, uh, Monday kon na, uh, damoy, uh, biskan kon na, eh kon bahosh na. Eshi le Washington, ah, analna, akoa, sisbo, eshi hota eh, ah, ndalnehto leh, lta eshi eh, ah, nda, ah, ndalnechtoleh eshi eshi na. So eh, eh do, although, hota eh ya, uh, kippe hazen do leh, deneketche. You know, I, I just wanna briefly, we got a lot, a lot, a good lineup today as Vice President mentioned. And you know, when you switch hit from Navajo to English, it takes uh, some time. But I know a lot of our elderly, our sen, uh, our senior citizens are, are watching and viewing and, and I try to do our, our, our very best to translate in, in both, um, but there is a, a lot of individuals who are gonna speak today. We got Garrett Silversmith, uh, Navajo Department of Transportation, you know, even though there was a shutdown of government, Navajo Department of Transportation has been working through that, um, pandemic, getting roads fixed, um, and you know, doing some repairs out there as well because that's a priority, you know, that's an essential service. We have Arben Mitchell on here, US Census is gonna tell you a little bit, uh, where we're at. Uh, uh, we, the last number that I received, which the self responding, we're at sixteen point three percent. That's good, good job. Remember we were down about, uh, three weeks ago, we were just at two percent. And so during that time, we got up to sixteen point three percent, but we need to go higher. But it's a one point three percent jump, so good job. Let's challenge ourselves to do the census. We got Dr. Jill Jim, who's gonna give us an update on Navajo Department of Health, also the Health Command Operations Center. We got Dr. Perfilia Fowler, that's gonna be talking about the, uh, gradual. Let me underline, have you underlined that gradual reopening of the Navajo Nation Government? People are still gonna be working, tele, teleworking from home. We're not gonna have everybody be in their offices, you know, but, uh, Dr. Fowler will talk, uh, more about that. We also have, uh, Chief Francisco, Navajo Police Department, um, telling you about the curfews, uh, what happened yesterday. You know, it was a great, uh, turnout, um, we did a roadblock checkpoint. Uh, as you go out of Saint Michael's up the hill towards the summit, we handed out, um, masks, homemade masks. For those of you that donated homemade masks, we handed those, many of those out. JT Willie is, is making a lot of those masks, you know. The goal of JT and this administration is to get ten homemade masks to every Navajo Nation employee. And we have given two, at least two, to every single Navajo on there, I mean, that's the, the statistics. If you need a mask, um, Eli or Jared, uh, thank you for helping with the, uh, town hall. If you can, uh, put the phone number up, those of you that want homemade masks, that really need it, give it to your elders. Give us your address, we'll, we'll, uh, put the phone number up, our email up, email us, we'll get, we'll send you some masks, uh, homemade mask for you and your family. Um, and, um, yeah, so, just real quick again, uh, we did a food and supply distribution in Winslow Loop at Delcon this past weekend. Um, high numbers, above average, let me just say above average numbers. Uh, and the Winslow Indian Healthcare Corporation, numbers are, uh, center is going down. Good job to the Winslow Indian Healthcare Center staff, uh, for doing such a great job out there. Galavina Medical Center and Tsitsui Medical Center has still seen, uh, a little above the average, uh, numbers. And that's why we're doing these checkpoints here. But all across the Navajo Nation, all the service areas, you're going down. Uh, if you can put up the, uh, slide Eli on the graph of the, um, eight service areas, uh, I'll talk a little bit about that, but I, I just wanna commend, uh, each and every one of you for staying strong. I know that, uh, you know, we're, in these unprecedented times, um, people are just tired of staying home, but some are enjoying it. You know, some are enjoying their, uh, uh, cleaning around their house and getting some exercise during this time. And I know, uh, Vice President is, is been running, getting active out there. A lot of people throughout the Navajo Nation, getting back to their trails, great weather to do that and keep up the good work. You know, you're, we're strengthening our immune system for a possible second wave. I know we're not supposed to say that as Navajos, but you know, our prayers, uh, maybe we won't have a second wave. Uh, we also can, um, Alicia Gishi, uh, that's on, thank you, at Winslow Indian Healthcare, uh, Center and your team. Uh, appreciate, uh, the awesome work that you all did during the, uh, food distribution. Um, and you know, we're gonna be doing that this Saturday. I know some pe, some people are gonna be wondering why we're having a food and supply distribution in Phoenix, Arizona. Let me tell you why. Um, you know, we got a lot of help from our relatives from, that are living in Phoenix. They donated to the Phoenix Indian Center, food, supplies. The Phoenix Indian Center staff, leadership there brought that up to Navajo and we handed them out here during the one hundred and ten chapter, food distribution, supply distribution. And so as a nation, you know, we appreciate the Friends of the Navajo Nation for giving us, uh, some help, some relief. And now that our numbers are coming down and, and numbers were going up in Phoenix, you know, we should also give back as a people. And so this Saturday, we're gonna be helping to give back to our families down there. So if you have family members down there, go to the Phoenix, uh, Indian Center, uh, parking lot. Let's, let's put that, um, uh, flyer up, um, uh, Eli, the flyer for the food and supply distribution this Saturday. Uh, and it's, it's not for Navajos, it's not for, uh, you know, uh, any nationality. It's for anybody that is in need of some assistance, you know? People are struggling throughout the country. Uh, Congress failed to put the, um, benefits back up. Uh, and so people are gonna need some assistance. So, uh, whenever Eli can get that, uh, um, PowerPoint up, the slide, oh, there it is. So, uh, Saturday, August fifteenth, uh, eight AM start, it's at Central High School, the parking lot there. And it is, uh, forty, forty-five twenty-five, I think. I shouldn't have been teasing my older sister because now I'm, I might need bifocals, everyone. I think it says forty-five twenty-five North Central Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. So that's on Saturday, we're teaming up with, uh, of course, we're Navajo Nation, World Vision, Phoenix Indian Center. Some of the churches down there are gonna be helping as well and other, uh, Helping Hands as well, gonna be helping, uh, with that food distribution drive. So if you have people out there that are in need, come and join us. And if you're okay, then you know, maybe you wanna volunteer, just bring your mask, bring some stuff. Uh, we're not gonna be going down there, uh, from the Navajo Nation, uh, but there is enough volunteers out there to help. And they've done it before. So we're just sending all the, the distribution out there so that they can do it. But we're gonna do a live feed on Saturday though. So we'll be here in Window Rock, we'll be talking and, uh, getting to know some of the Phoenix Indian Center, uh, leadership and the staff and everybody. They give you kinda, you know, like what we do, give you, uh, bird's eye view of the distribution that's happening there, uh, in Phoenix, Arizona, at the Central High School parking lot. Although, tomorrow's Code Talkers Day, you know, uh, it's a holiday for Navajo Nation employees. And we will be having a live feed as well, if you can put that one up, uh, Eli. Navajo Code Talker event, um, you know, there's various organizations, the descendants, the legislative branch. Usually we would all come together and have a big event, uh, at the parking lot, at the office in Window Rock. But we're not able to do that because of the virus, so there's gonna be, we're, we're just gonna have a short little, um, segment. I know that the legislative branch will be doing something longer, uh, but we will have, uh, Navajo Code Talker Day live feed. Our host will be, uh, Ms. Navajo, Shantie Parrish, she's gonna be hosting the event from nine AM, uh, possibly up to ten AM. We do have a special guest, uh, those of you that watch Wind Talkers, you know, uh, Mark Ruffalo, right? He was in there, a lot of, he's a movie star, he's gonna be one of our special guests, uh, tomorrow to say a few words and, uh, to the Code Talkers, their descendants, and of course, the, the Navajo people. So Mark Ruffalo will be, uh, on the feed tomorrow. Of course, us, uh, Vice President and myself and Division Directors, and we have, uh, other, uh, groups than at college, uh, and we will be, uh, uh, giving recognition to our warriors, our, our Navajo Code Talkers. Of course, uh, you know, the day is also to celebrate our veterans, thank you to our veterans for our warriors. And you know, we are warriors today too, we're fighting this COVID, uh, pos, uh, COVID coronavirus right now. And so, you know, keep strong, continue to fight this virus off, this monster off. And, uh, tomorrow is, uh, is a special day for the Navajo people. Administrat, administrative leave, uh, ends on August sixteenth. So on Monday, the seventeenth, there'll be a reopening, gradual reopening, and there'll be shifts as well. And so, you know, our numbers are down and we do have a, uh, reopening plan that is, uh, on our webpage. Uh, also our, uh, social media pages, so go ahead and check that out. And you can read through, you know, things that we are following. You know, what hap, what, what happens if there's someone that tests positive or someone that compromises a facility? All that information is on there, you know, everything, safety of our ci, of our citizens and our staff is of utmost importance. But you know, over fifty percent of our staff have already been working during this pandemic. So it's, it's just a gradual transition back to hopefully some normal operation because our Navajo people are wanting some assistance uh, with their, uh, you know, paperwork, cause they, they've been texting me, emailing me, saying this office is closed, scholarship office is closed. So we need to get, uh, direct services back to our Navajo people. Lastly, I just wanna say that the Council approved a distribu, um, a, uh, CARES Act Fund, um, expenditure plan. And right now, we're going through the lists and we'll be ma, making a decision pretty soon, uh, and I'm hoping tomorrow, on the next steps. You know, the only thing that we saw that wasn't included in what the Council approved, you know, we did a recommendation, you guys knew, know our recommendation, right? We kept talking about it, but at the end of the day, legislative branch, they're the ones who approve, uh, these proposals. But I, you know, the President Scott Line item veto authority, so don't be surprised if there's line item veto authority. The reason being is there's no direct aid in the package. There's one thousand dollars for, uh, people to get direct aid. So, uh, we're like, why one thousand, only one thousand dollars, right? That's only to help maybe one, two people. But we need, see, we recommended that fifty million dollars go to scholars, uh, to college students. That wasn't even considered. We, we wanted to put some money for, um, propane for elderly during the winter, that wasn't true. We wanted to put direct aid because many of you have texted and emailed us, saying that you're falling behind on your chitty payment. You need some food, your bills are piling up. We wanted to get some of that relief into the legislation, but, uh, it wasn't included. I know people are struggling, they want to get direct relief. And so that's a concern from our office because people are struggling out there. And we want them to have money to purchase, uh, food or even purchase a internet dish because people are gonna be, uh, needing to use social media or they're gonna need to, um, work through the internet or even our students, uh, have to turn in their homework as well. And so, you know, those are things that we're gonna have to bet, and that's your money, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that's your money. Um, we have the responsibility to make sure that there, you get the money. Of course, the, I appreciate the Council for approving the electricity, thank you. Also, the waterline projects, the electrical, uh, extension projects, the broadband, the telecommunication. Those were the bigger packages so that we could, uh, help, uh, our Navajo citizen out, and that was in there. So I appreciate that, but, uh, there are some questionable, uh, proposals in there, but we will let you know, uh, what, uh, our experts, you know, we have a group vetting all this, due diligence. And you know, we have to spend this money by December thirtieth. And if we can't spend it on projects by December thirtieth, then the best thing to do is just get the money out to the Navajo people. And we ask you, if we do that, And we ask you, if we do that, promise us that you will at least spend over 50% of that here on the Navajo Nation. Because it can help our economy here on the Navajo Nation. If we can just keep half of the $714 million here on the Navajo Nation, that's a boost in the arm for our Navajo Nation economy. And we could really do some improvement because sales tax come in, sales taxes are used to help our citizens. So I'm going to end there, thank you so much. And God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. Turn the time over to our Vice President, Myron Lizer. Take it away, Vice President. God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. Turn the time over to our Vice President, Myron Lizer. Take it away, Vice President. VP, I think you're muted.
Yeah, it got me, finally got me, sir. Oh, my gosh, I always been mindful to not do the mute, but it got me this time. But thank you, Mr. President, appreciate.
We always, we always do that. Start going to town and next thing you know, you're unmuted, so.
Said the best stuff, man. Oh, man, forgot what I said now. Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate your leadership. So as our president was sharing, really yawn, shouting, give shout outs to some of our community that's out there. Lo and behold, I see Amarillo, Texas is online, peering into the Navajo Nation. Welcome, Sanasti, New Mexico. We're actually talking about you, Sanasti, tonight, bringing the internet capability to your area. I know your students need it, so we're working hard trying to make that happen. I'll speak about that a little bit later on. Also, I see San Carlos, Arizona, in the house. It's great to have you here, join us on this COVID-19 Town Hall update, as always. Bird Springs, Arizona, hey. Men Rimrock, Arizona, giving you all a shout out. Yat, hey, Vice President Lizer here. Comanche, 1200, Buss's Team. Although Comanche, D.C., Clas, D.C., it's good to be with you all tonight. Earlier, too, there was a question on whether we've heard anything on our request to have the CARES Act funding extension. And as you know, government, you know, working pretty slow, meeting on different things here. We continue to advocate for it. Just the other day, it was with Vice President Pence. And we make sure that our federal family and our congressional delegation know that we need them to advocate for us to change Congress's plan for Indian country. Some of our tribes are struggling to spend the money, as we are too, trying to meet. You know, sometimes it takes five to six to 10 years to get a project off the ground and to bring it to fruition. And ours is certainly, you know, hasn't been much, much better than that in some cases. In some cases, projects, you know, they're up and running rather quickly. But by and large, when you have $714,189,163.07, you know, you need to ensure that we're not going to send any of that money back. We want to utilize every, every penny here on Navajo. And so certainly with a December 31st deadline looming on the horizon, we need to continue to work on that extension. And so, you know, just answering the question that somebody had posed online. So we haven't heard anything definitive. Heard a lot of great promising remarks last month. Spoke with Dr. Ben Carson, the Secretary of the Housing and Urban Development. He was favorable, said, yes, your government will be flexible. Also, Sonny Perdue, the Secretary of the United States Department of Agriculture, has said the same thing. You know, as long as there's a plan, as long as you have a shovel-ready project that's ready. And, you know, lo and behold, we do have shovel-ready projects that are ready to go. They have been for quite some time, I just needed funding. And it also has the constraint, they have succinct rules and federal guidelines on how to spend that CARES Act money. It's got to be something related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And, you know, we'll use it to stave off this current pandemic and also prepare for the next pandemic and what that might look like. And so we certainly need our congressional partners to be able to advocate for us. And so we'll continue to do that. And, you know, I know it's come sometime to a point of staying home here. But when your leaders are out very close in your region, you take those times to advocate and to speak well of your people and to give them updates. Because if you're not doing that, you're out of sight, you're out of mind and out of the game. You know, that's, I've always said that, running the nation is about relationships. And we certainly developed and worked very hard to establish what we have now. And only to lose it, you know, would be something that would be terribly hard to overcome. And so we'll take those opportunities as they come. So I want to just thank you, though, for all of those people that are chiming in on that. Appreciate it, we look at them and we respond accordingly. And, you know, also to that, you know, nobody's been blocked from the Facebook page, so be encouraged there. There's always a temptation for that. But, you know, I think you all, your heart's in the right place. And certainly, the heart of the Vice President is in the right place advocating for the people and the great nation of Navajo. So appreciate you all, much love, much love. So we've been working hard to ensure that when we do, when OPVP and all of the rest of our tribal government comes back, that our staff is well-prepared and all of our personnel, all of our people that are able to come back to work and come back safely and come back with confidence. And so they need to, to continue providing these vital services to the Navajo people. There's a website out there if you have any questions, I know there are. www, Eli, if you could put that on just to give our people a glimpse into what that website looks like. navajoopening.navajos-nsn.gov, that's the website. That's N-A-B-A-J-O hyphen Nelson, Sam Nelson dot gov. So at this website, you'll be able to, you see that, it looks very, very appealing. It's got a lot of vital information, you'll see our different phases as our government is, you know, able to put out timely information and messages out there. So if you have any questions, go to this website and you'll be able to probably answer just about any question you might have. And if you don't find the answer that you're looking for, certainly there's phone number and contact information on that website. So Navajo Reopening. And so as we bring back our people, August 17th being the time that our workers come back, you know, it'll be with much, you know, a little bit of tension. You know, people have been sitting at home, most of them behind their computer in the comforts of their own home. And now to get back into the public setting, into the work setting, you know, it's going to take some momentum, we need momentum, we need traction. And so we're in this together. And so we just want to make sure all of our workers are very confident. So you get all your information here at Navajo Reopening there. So thank you, Eli, I appreciate that, that's real good. And as we do that and bring our workers back, we also have our businesses that will be reopening here very shortly. The nonessential businesses to continue to, you know, be under the watchful eye of leadership. Our numbers certainly have flattened and they've been flat for about a month, month and a half. And our numbers continue to decline. And so we're very grateful for the decrease, seven, just seven yesterday, and today was a little bit higher. But, you know, our numbers are certainly looking favorable. And so continue to be vigilant. And when you do go out and travel, supplies, groceries, all that, you know, continue to sanitize and wipe everything down, wear your mask, social distancing. I know it gets kind of difficult to meet, but it's very important that we continue to be vigilant and advocate for that. And so we're all in this together, you know, we are all still working hard and trying to bring internet capability to every chapter. Right now, there's a plan in place. It's not quite gotten the ear of our council delegates. And we're advocating, we'll be courting them, lobbying them hard to bring internet capability to every chapter. We have a proposal on the table right now. Some of you may have seen the Verizon vehicle unit out here in Sabanito. It's providing quite, I don't know any other way, I'm not a techie, I'm not a technical-minded person with regard to that. But I was told that 1,000 people could get on this, the internet and use it. And you don't have to be a subscriber to Verizon, you can use the Wi-Fi capability. And then other carriers' phones could use the Wi-Fi calling capability. And so it certainly could be a benefit to all of you in the community there. So check it out there in Sabanito, right there outside of Winderock. Also in Chinli at the Chapter House. You know, I think the students are the ones that are going to be the benefactors here. Get out there and sample it. And so we're working to bring this to fruition. We still need a lot of help from our council delegates, also leadership as well. And so it's certainly a goal of ours to do that. And so we have also in this proposal, which wasn't, they added some added value. And so they have a plan to bring 110 chapters internet capability, but also 66 of our BIE schools to have this hardware set up so that the students who are needing to stay home to be safe and, you know, to be vigilant, we want to give them the opportunity to do their studies online. And so to provide a way that the students can be and receive by virtue of some Wi-Fi there, some benefits in all of those 66 BIE schools. And so that's just a new development as of today, I found out. So I just wanted to be transparent, give that to you. But this was very important and it's here now. And hopefully, we can work with our council members here to bring it to their attention and to advocate for it. And hopefully, as we work these projects and spend the CARES Act money, this is something that we can make happen for the next two years. We could be having internet in all of our 110 chapters. So we appreciate all those. And it's for our public safety, our first responders, and also for the students in all of those areas as the schools are prayerfully going to be kept closed until it is all safe out there for students to meet and congregate in larger numbers. And, you know, it's been, it's about to protecting the administration, I'm sorry, the administration and also the teachers in these fine institutions all across our land. And so telecation online at your finest, and so we appreciate it. So let's get ready for that, let's continue to, even you, on Facebook, the social media, you know, you have access to your council delegates, you know, call them up and say, hey, you know, what's this I hear about the plan of bringing internet to these places? We can certainly use your help there. So I could go on and on, there's so many things to discuss. But I know we also have a fine panel of people here, namely right after me, speaking on the census here. Earlier, I started when the president was, had to log back off here. Block the Knock is the newest campaign here for our Census 2020. They were, the numbers were pretty low, right? People self-reporting, self responding on internet. They're starting to knock on doors. And if you don't want anybody knocking on your door, then register, go online, get to point, wherever you are living on April 1st, that's your place where your residence is. And so make sure you and your family members are counted. So, and if you don't want anybody knocking on your door, then register or go to an outreach. They have a schedule there, if you can go to their website there and find out where their outreach will be. You can go and register there, like I did, went all the way to Chinli to register for my family here. And so continue to be vigilant on that, we need to count everybody. If you don't want anybody coming to your house, block the knock and register online or go to an outreach. So I think I've said enough, Mr. President. I am going to introduce Mr. Arvin Mitchell, who's been heading our Census 2020 outreach here on Navajo with some timely data. And I'll bet you he's got some encouraging numbers for us. So Mr. Arvin Mitchell, if you would, take it away, sir.
Vice President, hello, President. Thank you very much for having me on again. Every 10 years, we do a population count. it needs the internet to be effective when we're collecting data out there. And a non-response follow-up. Norfou, no. E, they give, they don't, they, they. E, it's Sunday, yeah, but I, I. September 30th. October 31st, Washington. A budget, a, 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 September 30th. October 31st. Although President, Vice President. One, a, 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 a. One, a, 31 days. A, 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 a. Census. A, a. Throughout the nation, Washington. A, a. We're short 31 days. Were short 31 days, were short 31 days in collect, uh, in collecting the, uh, the questionnaire. 16.3, [speaking Navajo] 16.3, this is based on 76,000 housing unit, 76,000 housing unit. Uh, and eh, uh, agency, eh, uh, there's five agencies within, within Navajo Nation. Forty-five's Agency, eh, uh, they, they did a response of 19.5, 19.5. Uh, the Chingli Agency, a 13.4%. Uh, the Western Agency, a 16.6%. Eastern Agency, a 16.4%. Uh, the Northern Agency, a 15.9%. Uh, the biggest increase that, that happened within the last, the last week, eh, eh, Northern Agency, they had an increase of 1.7%. Uh, and eh, uh, Chinli Agency, a 1.4% increase. Uh, the Forty-Five's Agency, a 1.3%. Uh, the Eastern, eh, uh, 1.1%. Uh, the Western Agency, a 0.9% eh, [speaking Navajo] increase. Uh, [speaking Navajo] By, by, uh, by census track, by census track, [speaking Navajo] Increase, eh, [speaking Navajo] Congratulations to these, to these chapters, eh, 2.6% increase last week. One week, eh, Cove Chapter, Red Valley, the Tropical, Shiprock, Tenacity, eh, eh, they had an increase of 2.6%. Uh, the 2.1% uh, in one week, eh, Delcon, Tisto, Whitecomb, Indian Wells. Uh, the 1.9% they added, Red Mesa, Mexican Water. Uh, the [speaking Navajo] all, all these chapters in the Utah portion again. Uh, the 1, 1.8% eh, um, uh, White Fields, uh, the Selly, Round Rock, uh, [speaking Navajo] Eh, eh, 1.8, 1.7% eh, San Juan, Sheep Spring, Two Gray Hills, uh, the Newcomb, eh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, they had these increases in those areas, eh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, [speaking Navajo] Eh, eh, every Monday from 10 to 2:00, eh, eh, we're at Crown Point. Uh, the Pinia, [speaking Navajo] Eh, eh, Navajo Shopping Center Parking Lot, eh, eh, uh, eh, uh, 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 eh, uh, Census [speaking Navajo] Uh, the every Tuesday, eh, eh, Shiprock, [speaking Navajo] Uh, the every Wednesday, eh, Tubus City, uh, the Burnside, [speaking Navajo] Uh, the every Thursday, eh, Chinli, uh, the Delcon, [speaking Navajo] Uh, the every Friday, [speaking Navajo] Sanders, eh, eh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, the every day, eh, eh, from 8 to 4:30, eh, eh, uh, Wind Rock, in the office, eh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, questionnaire, eh, [speaking Navajo] Every Monday through Friday, uh, we had a lot of turnouts over at [speaking Navajo] We had a big increase in Delcon area. Delcon area, [speaking Navajo] Uh, the [speaking Navajo] Supervisor, uh, the, uh, Western, [speaking Navajo] We only have up to September 30th. Uh, we have like 50 days left, 50 days, you know, see, uh, uh, when, when you count all the days, eh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, the Census [speaking Navajo] Eh, 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 [speaking Navajo] Uh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, [speaking Navajo] We started ran out of workers on the Navajo site. Uh, the, eh, we trained 451, uh, individuals to do, uh, non-response follow-up. We're supposed to have like 1,200 to 1,500 eh, [speaking Navajo] So we're not even halfway to, to our code yet. [speaking Navajo] Uh, the, every day, indeed, uh, trailer, eh, uh, ACO Office, eh, training, [speaking Navajo] Eh, [speaking Navajo] Eh, eh, internet, eh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, [speaking Navajo] Eh, eh, 844330, uh, the 2020, eh, [speaking Navajo] Uh, telephone, eh, the number, eh, 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 [speaking Navajo] Thank you very much.
We will now turn the time over to, um, Garrett Silversmith to give us an update on INDOT. Then we'll go to Chief Francisco, Dr. Jim, and then finish off with, uh, Dr. Fowler. Go ahead, Garrett. You're on mute, sir.
Got me here too. Thank you, President Nez and Vice President Lizer. Good evening and greetings. I'm privileged and honored to present to you briefly some updates here at Navajo Division of Transportation. I am their division director and along with myself, I have a great supporting staff who is very knowledgeable and experienced in all matters of maintenance and new construction of, um, highways, roads and bridges. So I want to quickly start off with just what's happening on the division, division front here with our activities for the last month or two. Of course, with this COVID-19 pandemic happening here, we, we, we've been quite involved supporting Office of the President and Vice President and our nation in general, offering our full support to our President and Vice President who are doing a great good job leading this nation as far as battling and combatting this COVID-19 virus here. But, uh, since the last couple of months here, we, along with Navajo DOT, along with OPVP, Navajo Nation Police Department and our Division of Natural Resources and, um, Ms. Navo, Officer Ms. Navajo as well, another entity is we've been, we've been setting up, um, highway checkpoints and roadblocks strategically around the Navajo Nation. And I would estimate that we've, we've probably conducted over 30 of these and my numbers are probably just approximate. We, we might've done quite a bit more. I know for some, a couple, for some consecutive weekends, we did quite a bit there on Shiprock, Winderock, Chinli, Tubus City, Crown Point, you know, just places across the Navajo Nation. So my staff and I, we, we've been involved with those and the whole intent of that is just to keep the public, um, knowledgeable and remind them that, um, for instance, as President Nez mentioned just yesterday, we did one just west of Winderock in St. Michael's, Arizona. And the message there was a reminder to all the traveling public is the importance of let's keep our numbers down as far as the individuals who have, who have contracted the virus, contacted the virus. So yesterday's event, we handed out hand sanitizer, reading literature about the COVID-19 facts and figures and what's happening on a nationwide front and, and worldwide. So, and so that's been happening and, and along with yesterday, we hand out face masks and like I mentioned, uh, the reading literature. So it's quite positive, a positive, positive event. The, the traveling public was quite responsive and so they were, they were very appreciative of what we were doing out there. We were partnering out there with Navajo Nation PD, Office of the President, Vice President. So that went really well yesterday. And just like yesterday's event, we've done that in the past and we're going to be continuing to do that in the future here. So we need to continue that, just a friendly reminders to all Navajo Nation members, just importance of, uh, our PPE, personal protection equipment. Since March, we've had, um, a, a certain percentage of our employees here as recognized as, as, as essential employees. So with our role and responsibilities for the past few months here, since March, we've been doing, continuously doing our, our identified role and responsibility, which is road maintenance and new construction. So granted, our staff wasn't fully staffed, but we were making do with what our, our circumstances would provide for us, just the resources and the limited man and woman power that was available. We are continuing to do that, uh, providing that key service. So thank you, Navajo Nation for the understanding, understanding and, and supportive of where we are. And so we're, that's on the maintenance front. So on the maintenance front, we've been busy doing our, our daily, weekly roadblading services in all five agencies. So overall in the Navajo Nation, we have over 9,500 miles of dirt roads. So that's quite a, quite a task in itself. Um, along with dirt roadblading, we've been doing other, other maintenance items that are closely related to that. We've been assisting the Bureau of Indian Affairs. So that's been moving along on a day-to-day basis. Now I want to quickly move into the new construction portion of what we've been doing as, as a division here. Within the last few months here, we've, we've have actively federal highway administration projects that are happening right now. We have one in Cabito, Nazlini, Chinli is the second one. The third one is over in Sealy, the White Fields Lake, Arizona. And the fourth one will be, so those three projects are continuing and they're active as of today. Navajo Engineering and Construction Authority is the identifying contract for those state projects. Now, now over in Sealy, Cottonwood, we have another one that will be restarting this Monday. So we're excited about that as well. We're starting activities this coming Monday over in Sealy, Cottonwood. And it's our plan to get that done by November Thanksgiving of this year, probably even earlier. So, um, our, our, our Roads Department has, has been doing a tremendous job out there and, and just being out there and moving that project along and the chapter and the community members have been very supportive and providing, uh, their insight as well into the, uh, as far as the project is related. We have some upcoming projects that will be starting soon. We have a, we have one in Lupton, Arizona, a bridge project. Uh, so we're looking forward to starting that one soon here in Lupton, Arizona. And also we have, um, several, we have probably, um, uh, in queue, we probably have 30 plus road maintenance, light construction projects happening overall in Navajo Nation. These might be funded by fuel excise tax, road fund management, the Mexico capital outlay, our CSN funds, our general funds. So we're quite busy over here at Navajo Division of Transportation. We have other, other upcoming projects that are happening as well. We have one that's going to be happening, several happening here. Ho Ho Amarillo, Bird Springs, Bird Springs, Arizona, N71, we plan, hopefully we plan to get that one going in, um, late September. So, uh, we're excited about that one as well. And we have another one that's upcoming in Blue Canyon, Arizona, Mini Farms, Arizona. So a little bit here and there. Now as far as our division is, as far as how, how we've been affected in handling this COVID-19 crisis is that we're a guide, we are strictly mandating and, and going along with the, the local and Navajo Nation and, and, and national guidelines, health standards as that's been established and in place. That includes our PPE and so forth. We have hand sanitizer stations established and, and which leads me to my next topic of discussion, we, as you heard from our leadership here, President and Vice President, we will be returning to work this coming Monday. Um, so it's going to be over three, three-phase approach and we're excited about that. But since March, since the onset of this COVID-19 crisis, we have been, we have been, um, working and continuously. And so, so over the, the past few months, we've been at 40, 40% staff, sometimes 50, sometimes 60% fully staff. But within these next, uh, three weeks, we're going to get that slow transition to 100% fully staff. So the first phase of our, of our implementation plan will, will begin with the return of some key, key personnel that are beginning this Monday. And so we're going to provide them with every essential item that's needed to, to prevent the COVID-19 from, from coming to, to our nation and to our division here. So we've been quite adamant about strictly abiding by these guidelines. So that's one, that has been positively happened on the Navajo Nation and in our division. So I got to give a lot of credit to my, to our staff here at Navajo DOT, our managers and supervisors and key people, where they've been doing a wonderful job here and, and trying his best to serve the Navajo Nation and within our role and responsibility. We're going to continue to practice our social distancing, our social separation. We need to do that. Um, quite a bit of, uh, other things that we have, we're going to be implementing this coming Monday. And so we're looking forward to that again as well. And finally, I want to, I want to end here with, uh, our Navajo Nation Co-Talkers Day. Of course, Navajo Nation Co-Talker Day, Co-Talkers Day is, is tomorrow, August 14th, 2020. And it's, uh, it's a great, and then it's a wonderful holiday that I'm, I'm quite pleased with myself and I'm looking forward to the events tomorrow. And, and it's an important day for us to recognize, honor and celebrate our Navajo Nation Co-Talkers, their legacy, what they accomplished, um, previously. And it's, it's critically important that we remember their accomplishments, their achievements and their sacrifices that did, that they did for our great country of ours. So they're in our prayers, uh, they'll always be and they're a part of our history. And, um, uh, as President and Vice President have noted earlier, that event begins tomorrow at nine. So we hope to see you there. And on behalf of my, my division, Navajo Division of Transportation, again, I'm Garrett Silversmith, their division director, and I'm supported by five, um, key managers within our, within, within our division. So they're doing a wonderful job and our support staff have been great. So it's one step at a time as we battle this Navajo Nation and with God's prayer, our continuous prayers and keeping Biden, Biden, the national... and keeping Biden by the national and local guidelines for preventing this disease, this virus, we're going to beat it. So we're here and we're going to continue to support the Navajo Nation, our role and responsibility to improve as best as we can our transportation infrastructure and system along with our partners, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, our counties, our state partners, our federal partners, our federal highway administration. And so we have great participation, great involvement from them as well. And so that's what I want to conclude with the Navajo Nation and all listeners out there. So thank you for listening and we'll see you soon here shortly. So God bless you all. Thank you.
Good evening. So I believe I'm up next. Can everybody hear me okay?
Chief, we can hear you.
All right. This is a fellow friend, Francisco. I'm the Chief of Police of Navajo Police Department. I am Billy Ganna, born for Hush Kishni and Chachini. So I just kind of want to give an update of what's going on and give you some safety tips. Moving forward, you know, we're transitioning from being completely closed and starting to reopen things. So we have some concerns and we just want to kind of educate you on the things that we believe as law enforcement that you should be aware of and be cautious of as we start to move forward, you know. And one of those big things is, you know, schools starting to open, at least online, there's some concerns there. So like President said and Mr. Silversmith said, we have been partnering with DOT and Office of the President and Vice President throughout this whole pandemic on doing checkpoints out in the communities to really educate the public about, you know, the health orders, the curfews and just really using your PPE and keeping everybody safe and trying to flatten the curve and reduce, you know, how many people get sick and die from COVID. So this has been a big effort. I think it's one of the really good partnerships with all the people that worked together to make these happen with our law enforcement officer because, you know, we can't do it alone because we have to still maintain public safety with everybody out there and we have to do these checkpoints. So without, you know, NDOT and Office of the President and Vice President, everybody else involved with those checkpoints, we wouldn't be able to be successful in that. So I want to thank everybody for helping with that. And, you know, the public for really, you know, taking that, what we're saying seriously and, you know, complying with their curfew and the health order and using your PPE and keeping the social distance. So I think that's what is a big factor in our success in bringing the curve down. So the numbers are quite low. But we're going to continue doing these checkpoints because we want to make sure that the public is aware and still stays vigilant and not let up because we don't want to see, you know, that spike go up again. And you know, the reality is it's probably not going to go away for a long time. So we're trying to develop habits. And I talked about that before, just, you know, we have to make it a habit, wearing your mask, washing your hands and things like that. And we're just trying to keep everybody aware so that can happen. So we don't lose any more people from this sickness. So for Navajo Police Department, we'll continue doing those educational checkpoints. We'll, you know, monitor it, the district will monitor that and see if there's an uprising, trafficking things and they'll respond accordingly. But we still are doing priority calls. Those still are being taken care of every day. And we did change our operation a little bit during COVID to try to protect the officers. So we reduced some services that were in person, you know, some minor calls, we asked them to hold off on, asked the community to hold off on. But now, you know, we're moving towards going back to full service policing. So the direction to my staff and my officers, we're going to start taking all those calls, we're going to start responding and we're starting to take serious every single call. Not that we weren't taking it serious before, but, you know, those minor calls, they're going to be taking those in person a lot of times if they're not able to take it over the phone. So and all of our services have been a hundred percent working this entire time. Records has still been working, all of our support staff or the police department has been working this entire pandemic because we are essential service and public safety is very important. So some of the things I want to bring up that is a concern for, you know, all our citizens and it's not solely a law enforcement issue, but it's a health issue is hand sanitizer. You know, it can be abused, people consume it or, you know, could be accidentally consumed by children. So make sure to store those out of reach from children, the hand sanitizer. You know, it looks like it's clear, it looks like water, so we can be fairly easily confused by our young children. So monitor the use of the children. Always check the labels and make sure you're using the correct thing. So there is a ability for people to abuse hand sanitizer. Alcoholics can actually use it, you know, to get alcohol high or drunk off of. So be very cautious of that and where you store it and who has access to that because we don't want anything to happen to our relatives. Because, you know, even though it can have that effect where you can't drink it and get, you know, drunk like you would alcohol, it has other medical problems that are associated with that, which can be life threatening. So we don't want to do that. We have seen our EMS staff and our police staff having responded to these calls where people have gotten very sick, hospitalized or died in some cases. So I just want to make sure everybody understands and is cautious of that. So going back to school, I know most of the schools are going to be online in some sort of technology over the computer, over the internet. So the caution is, you know, there is people out there that will take advantage of this, you know, take advantage of our children that are online, you know, predators. There could also be scams as far as, you know, money solicitation and things like that. So really monitor your children, what they're doing on their computers, even though they're doing stuff on school. We are urging everybody to really be careful and monitor who they're interacting with and make sure it's acceptable. Those online chat messaging, there's a lot of those. There's instant chats, there's online gaming, all these platforms, you know, they have predators or they have people that will get on there and try to interact with your children. So be cautious of that. And please, if that happens, you know, don't hesitate to call and report those so we can investigate those and hopefully put a stop to those people that are doing that. Keep communication with your children about the dangers of the internet because there's, you know, there's content on there. You can't just let them have free reign of searching things because there is some stuff that you don't want your small children who are impressionable to get a hold of. So home safety. So a lot of children will be home, they won't be going to school in person. And, you know, when people are starting to go back to work and things are opening up, make sure that we have these children monitored at home by an adult. I know there's, you know, people that have to work and different things, but take caution and make sure you're not leaving those children alone and have the proper healthcare provided or childcare provided to those youth. So then one more thing is there's a lot of uprising in people using online garage sales, marketplaces, selling things online. And they'll meet people out in the community and make those exchanges, which is, it was good because we can't do those, you know, yard sales and things in person. But just be cautious when you make those transactions, do it in a public place. If you feel comfortable, feel free to use the local police station parking lot to do those things and just be cautious and everybody knows where you're at. We need to make those exchanges. Just use some caution because that could have, there's a potential for some dangerous things to happen there. So those were the main things. Our traffic enforcement team, because of COVID, we had it kind of on hiatus because we need more officers on the street and help with the checkpoints. But we haven't, last few weeks, they're up in operation again. So being at the communities and the businesses are going to be open, people are going back to work, there'll be an uptick in traffic. So we want to make sure everybody's safe. So the traffic team is going to be out there enforcing, you know, seat belts, car seats, speeding and the other things to keep our roadway safe and make sure everybody's, you know, getting to where they need to go safe. So and also the uptick in traffic during that time for everybody, just use caution. Make sure you leave your house on time so you don't have to rush, pay attention, you know, be cautious and don't be texting while you're driving and those kinds of things. Just remember, it's been a while since some of our citizens have gone back and forth to work and commuted. And now we're going to go start that again. So we want everybody to be safe. I just want to remind everybody that curfew hours are still nine PM to five AM, Monday through Friday. We still have the lockdown, nine PM on Saturday to five AM on Monday on the weekends, the thirty-two hour curfew. And we'll still be out there doing those enforcement of the curfew out there for our officers. So I want to just commend my officers and my staff for their hard work during this entire time. They came in every day tirelessly and dedicated to really provide safety, even though there was a large concern about the COVID. And they still every day put themselves at risk to provide the safety to the citizens out there. So I can't thank them enough for what they've done. They're, I can't say how hard they work. I mean, it's just beyond measure. And I can't really show them my appreciation as much as I want to, but I want the community to know that they're working super hard every single day to provide the safety that you guys deserve. I know we're limited on our resources and our staff, but they do an excellent job with what they have. So I commend everybody for their work. And again, just make sure, you know, everybody stays vigilant with the Health Command Orders, your PPE, social distancing, the curfews. So it makes it easier on everybody else and we can hopefully get through and get back to some normalcy in life. So thank you everybody for your time and everybody's cooperation with what's going on here with this pandemic. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief Francisco, for those comments. I always appreciate the reminders regarding the curfew. So my name is Jill Jem. I'm the Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. So I wanted to give everyone an update today, but I wanted to just introduce myself and Navajo first. So and once again, thank you for the listeners this evening and also President Nez, Vice President Lizer, also Mr. Mitchell and Chief Francisco going over the details of the reopening and just a reminder about the preventive measures that we still have to consider when we're living with this pandemic, which is not going to go away soon. So I just wanted to just appreciate the words that we always have to do these reminders, even though we might sound like a broken record, but it's very important. I think I just wanted to reflect on some of the status that we're at as far as Department of Health and the Health Command Operation. The pandemic started early March here in the Navajo Nation. It's been a couple of months. I mean, in May, we saw our highest numbers. And as President mentioned, we've done really well as a nation to keep our numbers down. And it's really up to our own selves to make those decisions. And I think we always encourage everyone to take self-responsibility. As we all say, da'ahu te'agodea. So it's really up to you to make those decisions, to take on that responsibility. And I'm glad that we're able to work together and look out for each other among all our relatives, one way or another. I always say that on Navajo, it's, you always have many grandmas, many uncles, many aunts. And we have to look out for each other for those reasons because we do care very much and value our elders and everyone here on the nation. So I just want to kind of go back and describe at that time what had happened. We did hit a peak at one time and the numbers are really steady at this point, very low, very low. Mostly all the numbers are less than a hundred. We want to keep those numbers very low in order to stabilize our situation here on the Navajo Nation. These are community mitigation measures that the health experts from the Center of Disease and Prevention Control are here with us on the nation. There's a couple of them here. There are at the central office, there's some in Kianta to the city and Gallup. And they're here to help us in responding to the pandemic. And also we have other partners on the Navajo Nation, our own neighbors that we have and health facilities with the six thirty eights and our very strong partnerships that we have and including the Navajo Area Office, the BIA. And also the other partners that we have, as I mentioned, with FEMA, Department of Health and Human Services. A lot of volunteer agencies that have helped the nation up to this point and some are still here. We have the Group Core that are still here assisting with a lot of the isolation shelters and they're still happening. Although the cases are down, I mean, there's always the areas to look back and improve, make improvements on. And I think in the Health Command Operations Center, we're preparing for the public health approach to reopening because the economy still exists here. People still have to get food, people still have to go to school. We still have to move around in the nation, but it has to be done safely and gradually. And so those are the reasons why I appreciate the leadership supporting the gradual reopening of the Navajo Nation for businesses and the continued operation of the essential services and those include the tribal programs where we need access to food. Under Department of Health, we have several programs that still continually operated during the pandemic, such as the fruit distribution program, also the Women, Infants and Children Program, which we call WIC. There are also other programs such as the Senior Centers who continue to serve meals. I just want to thank all of those employees as well and all the first responders. It's really a whole collective effort. It takes a village to address an issue. And the mitigation strategies that the Health Command does is not solely done by people here in Windarock. It's done by the person that you see when you come into the hospital, a physician that's there. They've been working very hard. All of our health facilities, I hope, are resting and making sure that we avoid burnout. All the facilities have areas where in this pandemic, you have to treat a condition, a disease, which is COVID-19. We have to prevent the disease and that requires a lot of education, public health messaging in order to prevent the disease from spreading. And that's why we talk about the very basic preventive measures every single day. Keeping a mask on indoors and outdoors, washing your hands, social distancing, and that reduces everyone out. Your risk and another person's risk of getting COVID-19 because right now we don't have a vaccine. So I always think of all the individuals that are out there, going back to Chief Francisco, talking about his staff out there enforcing the public health orders and we appreciate all their help. The emergency medical services that are out there to transport patients, the CEXRs and also the public health nurses that are out there. We also have good relationships and partnerships with Don Hopkins and also the COPE organization from Gallup who assists with contact tracing and case management. Those are a lot of individuals within the Navajo Nation and I think we have to appreciate the amount of time that we put into this and the collaboration. It might not, it might look simple, but when a person is concerned about COVID-19, we're improving our guidelines as well for businesses. So as businesses are reopening, you receive your guidelines this week that will be supporting the reopening of Monday in an orange status. Please review those requirements for businesses because those are all going to be required to safely operate. I hope that we can assist you and support you and also conduct some enforcement to ensure that the numbers do not go up once we have more individuals in stores that we haven't had access to the last six months or so. So it's very important that that does happen. We open gradually. So I just want to remind everyone. And so I usually have some slides to share. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and share some of these and go over them very quickly here just to kind of give you an idea of all of these messages I just talked about. So and so as a reminder, you'll see these in front of stores or doors. This is just a flyer. You'll see hopefully that all the businesses will be able to get these in time. um, get these in time, but these are just basic reminders when you go into shop, um, at the gas station or to the grocery store or to um, other areas. And so that will require, um, this is basic, um, flyer to wear your mask. Maintain social distancing, washing your hand and disinfecting, um, high touch, uh, surfaces. Also, reminder is also to wear a mask, um. This is always a good one because it really shows the your risk from a high-risk exposure to a very low-risk exposure. And that really depends on if you both don't wear a mask to both, um, individuals wearing a mask and practicing social distancing. So as people are doing their errands tomorrow, um, tomorrow and the next day, um, continue to keep these in mind as you make sure you wash your hand, make sure you wash your mask correctly. Um, also, um, making sure they sit snugly over your mouth and nose. And also, um, to wear them indoors and outdoors reduces your risk. So. Another thing is just a simple reminder to prevent COVID nineteen is to wash your hand with soap and water for at least twenty seconds and use a hand sanitizer if, um, that's not, if water is not available. So when you're washing your hands, make sure you wet your hands properly, your entire hands. Apply enough soap to cover all your hand services, surfaces and then rub hands together and scrub every everywhere. I mean, that means between your nails, you can rub your fingers, you can uh, make sure you get the in-between your fingers, you can make sure that you wash your thumb on both sides. You can move your hands back and forth to make sure you wash, um, in-between your fingernails. And then you can also, uh, make sure you wash the palms of your hands also on top and also around. So you can sing songs if you want to do that. Making sure that you cover all areas of your hand is very important and then to rinse your hands with water. And dry hands completely using a single-use towel or an air dryer. So these are just some basic reminders and when you're out and about and at home, um, if you have kids, um, that you're staying with, um, and maybe you can teach them how to wash their hands correctly. So when they go back to school, you know that, um, you have, um, given them some really preventive measures that are habits, um, some good habits that are routine if you, um, want to do that at home with them. I think it's going to be very important. Other, um, this ones, I always appreciate this slide because sometimes you don't have time to go onto the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention website to see what, um, needs to be done when you are thinking that you had or have, um, COVID nineteen and you have symptoms. You have to ensure that you stay home and stay away from other people, especially for people that have underlying health conditions. And so if you think you had or had COVID nineteen, you might ask yourself, when should I be around people? And that really depends um, if at least ten days has passed since your symptoms first appeared. So it's always important to have a journal, um, if you are asked to, um, self-quarantine um, for any reason. And then also documenting if you had at least um, twenty-four hours since last fever without use of a fever-reducing medication. And also any symptoms, um, have improved since that time. So that's when you're able to be around people. There are two, um, strategies that the CDC looks at and that is a testing-based strategy, but also a symptom-based strategy. And this is a more of a symptom-based strategy that we're talking about this evening. So if you did test positive and you have no symptoms, um, you can, can you, um, continue to have no symptoms, but you can be with others after, um, ten days have passed since your test. And you continue to have no symptoms. So definitely important to look at those time periods as a calendar for but for anyone who has been around a person with COVID nineteen, your clock will start for fourteen days of quarantine after your exposure on the time it takes to develop illness. So if you feel like you've been around a person with COVID nineteen, that really depends on the length of time if you have been around this person. Um, without a mask, obviously you're a higher risk, um, of possibly tend to getting, um, COVID nineteen, but it's, that's why it's always very important to wear your mask. But if you have spent time in an enclosed room or within three feet, um, of three feet of each other and for fifteen minutes or um, longer, those are very red flags, um, that you can do. It signals that you really need to self-quarantine. At that time, you're considered a close contact. And what does asymptomatic mean? So we talked about, um, in in the world of disease, I guess, when we hear about, um, asymptomatic individuals and symptomatic individuals. Here, um, when asymptomatic, you might hear individuals talking about, um, we, we don't taste, test asymptomatic individuals or we test asymptomatic and symptomatic individuals. And so you might hear these terms and so basically all it means is that a person is presenting those symptoms of a disease. So in this case, no, um, signs or symptoms of a, of COVID nineteen um, in this case. And so asymptomatic transmission of COVID nineteen is the transmission of a person from, from, of the virus from a person who does not show symptoms. And this is where the disease very, very, um, varies. Um, there are um, situations where individuals, in this case, like it's indicating that they show mild symptoms or no symptoms at all, but they're easily transmitting transmitting COVID nineteen. And in some cases, they're more in younger individuals or kids or, um, younger adults. And those are the reasons why I think, um, the school, um, opening of face-to-face is very critical because of those, um, situations that children might have, um, more asymptomatic, um, symptoms, um, because that's what's been seen in for COVID nineteen. So individuals who are infected can be carriers of the virus and get others sick without knowing it. So that's when, and a younger person that doesn't, is very, could be not aware that they are transmitting between each other and could bring it home. And if that person is not practicing um, wearing masks with their friends that they don't live in the same household with and these individuals are from a different households, um, that can increase one, one's risk as well. So there's always, uh, the situation on, um, not knowing that you're a carrier and you go home and you could easily transmit to another person, um, without so showing any symptoms. Someone who suspects or knows they have been exposed to a person with COVID nineteen should self-quarantine for ten days. And so, um, there's a fourteen-day mark, but there's a ten-day mark as well and the self-quarantine as well. And so, but if there are symptoms could appear between two to four days after exposure. So it's very important that um, in this, um, reopening of the businesses to twenty-five percent and also the lifting of curfews, we are carefully monitoring. So, um, I'm glad to see that the numbers have not increased throughout this week because you could start seeing symptoms, um, within those two, uh, an amendment of two days um, for COVID to be, um, identified and and under, and other individuals as symptoms. So use this information to help, um, our elders and your family to, in your community to stay safe. Remember, the best way to, um, avoid becoming infected is to practice social distancing and wearing a mask when out in public. So, um, I hope this provides some information to everyone about asymptomatic individuals and the next one I want to talk about is what to do if a parent or a COVID or caregiver has COVID nineteen. So if a child's parent or caregiver is sick with COVID, um, there are always, um, ways to protect the child from getting infected. And that's always important is to have an emergency plan in place and avoiding, um, contact with the sick parent or caregiver, meaning no hugs or kisses. And I think that's been very difficult. Um, our society has changed. We are very, um, we always were very, um, welcoming of, um, hugs and also, um, it's just part of, eh, um, our, our own tradition and our culture has shifted in, in, in this, in this pandemic. And I hope one day that we are able to regain that, um, once this pandemic is over and um, but it, um, but it's with us right now and we have to continue to do that. And I know that people do the fist bumps or either the, um, shoulder bumps or the elbow bumps as well. So but if, um, possible, seek a caregiver outside of the home who is not, um, not at risk for COVID nineteen, whom the child can stay with. So that would be a possible way is to basically isolate yourself. And if a child has been exposed, meaning that um, you can, you're probably then at that point needing to quarantine with the child at that point if you um, are starting to show symptoms or you didn't know and, and so you, so you're both at risk for um, COVID nineteen. So, um, at that time, you can just, um, quarantine with that, with the child for fourteen days. And also frequently wash your hands for at least twenty seconds and wearing a mask near children, near a child, um, and maintain six feet distance. Um, in this pandemic, we do, um, we did receive a lot of reports for, um, household infections where, um, at that point, you're monitoring and you're um, hoping that the whole family will all recover soon and that, um, those were the situations. So the isolations of individuals really varied because sometimes they really impacted entire families, but also and impacted caregivers. And sometimes, um, we need to make sure there's an emergency plan for kids. So um, always increase ventilation in your home at, to increase circulation. And always disinfect all items before giving it to a child, especially if, um, kids are around two to three years old and they want to put everything in their mouth. Um, always disinfect those and, um, just on a daily routine as well. Watch, watch for your child's symptoms. Um, if the house has more than one bed, one room and bathroom section of the area for a sick individual and avoid sharing any items with sick, a sick parent or caregiver. And I think that's when those items such as paper products can be easily used to discard individuals, um, of food after they eat, if you're feeding them. If possible, the child should stay away from people who are, who are at high risk for getting sick for, from COVID nineteen. So as we're talking about children and caregivers, I think that relates back to the whole prevention of make ensuring that we really don't know, um, uh, with these situations around, um, asymptomatic individuals. And as Chief Francisco talked about, just the disinfected safety. Um, just reminding everybody that, um, disinfectants are not a treatment for COVID nineteen. So do not inject bleach Lysol or other disinfectant products thinking that it's a treatment or care for COVID nineteen. Make sure you read the label and do not use hand sanitizers that contain methanol. A substance that can be toxic when, when absorbed through the skin or indusid. Always follow the label instructions, um. There are probably a lot more cleaning products out there that we've never seen before. Some could be donated. Some could be bought from stores and, um, there are new products because of the shortages. So it's very important to learn how to read, um, the label instructions and also the products in the labels and following them and making sure you don't mix any of the chemicals and storing them outer reach for, of children. And we just want to make sure you, we protect the kids, um. And some of these products could be, um, very, um, bright colored. I mean, it could, um, and we don't want kids to think that's, um, something, um, fun to play with. So and make sure, making sure you lock them up properly. But there is a poison help hotline here at one eight hundred two 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 one two two two. Also disinfect, um, um, disinfectants are poisonous and can cause serious harm or even death if you swallow it or inject it. So I think this as a reminder to do that. Also avoid traveling out, uh, outside the Navajo Nation. Um, I always like this slide because it's always a reminder of the, um, the necessary or need to travel. And I think through the pandemic, I've known even now more that we are very mobile people. We like to travel. A three-hour drive is nothing to us, um, living on the Navajo Nation. And I just want to ensure that in this pandemic, we need to keep people safe and we need to um, ask, um, some questions to ourselves and is it worth it? Um, because is it worth it to infect others? Um, especially those that could be, um, to her, are having underlying health conditions that are either traveling with you or staying home or either wanting to know if you're even going to practice social distancing. Um, also, um, is COVID, uh, the area that you're going to, is it a hotspot? So just asking yourself those questions and then if you do, um, come into contact with someone that's COVID, uh, while you're out and about, are you prepared to quarantine for fourteen days after your trip? And also, are you prepared for the risk? There is not a lot of conversations that we have about, um, the risk or actually the consequences of COVID. Um, obviously with the COVID nineteen, we've experienced fatalities. We also know that, um, there's also a lot of, um, post, um, effects that we haven't talked about. And we should give time to talk about those, um, health complications regarding physical impairments, um, neurological, um, impairments or either memory, um, such as memory or either um, continued respiratory or either other kinds of impairments that we never thought that could happen with, um, one disease that we considered as a respiratory disease. And now through the research and through the situations with COVID nineteen, it's more than that. It affects, um, more than just your respiratory, um, your breathing and your capabilities of your oxygen. It is beyond that now. And we have not, we don't know what kind of impact COVID nineteen will, will have on, on us afterwards as we are hearing, um, of all of these complications after the fact. So the recovery of COVID is going to be very long. And we don't know what risks come with that, um, especially if people already have underlying health conditions and now it's layered with, um, the damage of COVID nineteen. So I just want to have people realize that it's really not over when you barely recover. There is situations we don't know, everyone experiences it differently. So I just want to reiterate that as you determine your travel and your decisions around social gathering as well. I mean, it's not just traveling off the reservation. Are you traveling to a social gather, attend a birthday event, attend some other event? And those are not, um, important right now because I think we need to keep ourselves healthy and people around us healthy. So when you always leave your home, I think a lot of the preventative measures is always still around, wearing your mask, washing your hands and maintaining social distancing. And I always liked this last slide because it always talks about the best way to prevent illness is to avoid being exposed to COVID. Stay home and avoid unnecessary travel as much as possible. So I just want to thank those that are listening, um, to continue to, um, take precaution and preventive measures. So thank you very much for listening and I hope that we, um, all learn something new and and ways to continue to prevent COVID. And I just want to give time over to Dr. Fowler now. Um, thank you very much, everyone.
[speaking Navajo] 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 Mr. President, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Uh, she says, "Kodo nichitjehinzi do." Njono go. Yanlhtenekejy, yanlhtje. Juei, ako, edishnile. Shumado, shumason. Shumason ye, ota nichitjehinzi. Ani. Oyo bikendekhalende, nindekhewa. Kade ya, bantetekhesla. Ani danne. Ani danne de lahweintse. Juei ben nachekon nichitzi la naaste ini khaan ye olil. Doni yinanti. Ben dahodi il alha, nanne juk aje ahwajij. Kade xalchene ahagande ndahastha. Aro la doniye kaini yidane. Mado je, noshningi. Ahagande e ya ndasotsha. Kade ya, aje ahwajij kodo. Xalchin yitsoke, yinalike. Dananti vichikunde. Ye nachetabetzil do le. Juei hatajkiro shina. So, na'au, agi axinkonsodo le. You know, we just want to end with the town hall with some encouraging words to everyone out there, you know. Tell people you appreciate them. Tell your family that you appreciate them, especially young people, you know. Shower them with affirmation and let them know that they are important and that they are appreciated in what they do. Now that we're going to be doing more online courses, they're going to be home a lot more. Here's an opportunity to spend an hour, two hours a day just sharing stories of your upbringing, sharing stories of our elderly and letting them know where they come from. Because that teaches them resilience. That teaches them that we've overcome some hardships in the history of our people as well as our families so that they know where they come from. And they'll be proud of that teaching. And they'll always remember this time, COVID-19 pandemic. It won't be such a scary time in their life. It'll be a time for where they come together and say, "Man, I appreciate that time when the pandemic was going around. I spent more time with my parents, my grandparents. Got a lot of teaching that will last them their whole life so that they can share it with their children and their grandchildren as well." So to encourage you, we all are in this together. We will all keep the numbers down. If we work together, we wear our masks, we social distance, we wash our hands with soap and water, and we stay home as much as we can. So ladies and gentlemen, this will end our office of the President, Vice President, COVID-19 Town Hall. We'll see you next Monday. Happy, enjoy, I should say, the Navajo Co. Talkers Day tomorrow. Stay tuned, listen in at 9:00 a.m. to this social media page. And Saturday, we'll be talking to the folks that are doing the food distribution down in Phoenix, Arizona, and that'll be Saturday at 8:00 a.m. So tune in. All the information that you need is here on the website, the webpages. God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. We love you. Have a good night. We love you. Have a good night.